One, two, three.
Four.
How do you feel this month?
Okay.
How do you feel this month?
I don't know.
Okay. Yeah.
We're done. We're ready. We're good again.
Very.
You'll lay back. It's Monday.
Mm-hmm. I think that I would like to agree. Jay or whoever, whoever the political people are here on this line of conversation. We can all be in the executive session if we're comfortable. So, but I'd like to say a question.
See. See.
Yeah. And I know that's kind of the gathering to the, um...
The only thing I have that I can say that would probably be spreadsheets. It's not like we have a budget. Is that what they have to say?
Well, yeah. Well, my main point of view is not required for creating. So, if this, you have to extrapolate from it. There's that spreadsheet report that prints out from your computer. In the end, these will print out that stat. I guess it probably will be able to turn into a seal inside actual ballots or something that got there. That's important.
See, hard man's spell, it's going to hard man's spell. It's not so great.
Maybe they should have that. It's not really that significant, yeah.
I don't know if I can go back to the part where there's a lot of feedback.
If you don't need to think about it, it's all good.
So, can I just email that so I can see if you replied?
Um...
What do you mail out since it's been turned?
No, I think I've emailed back. It's still on there. It's totally pretty bad, so. Seems like first one is kind of, here's the papers. Figure out what came to this. We'll go back to twenty-one. Is that number two, is that something you prepared? Or is it version numbers?
I've got, I think, a lot of different numbers. They might be somewhat less sure. It's that it's, and usually they're, I don't understand, maybe that statement down there. But again, I don't know if that's something I can hold on the computer. Something I have to go back and, go more than likely. I guess it could be some research. Am I going to charge him?
Yeah. Well, that part of it, you just, if you have an idea, maybe you should be prepared for everything.
I'm not blocked, all reading order pledged. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Take care of some housekeeping before Brooklyn Bridge gets here. We have a resignation letter from Susan Foster, who had been appointed to the Northeast Kansas Multi-Health Board of Directors. She has submitted her resignation. It would be my recommendation to go ahead and have a motion to accept her resignation.
Second.
With regrets?
Yes.
Okay, it's a probable move, and seconded just to accept Susan Foster's resignation from Northeast Kansas Multi-Health Board with regrets. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side, motion carried. Newest payroll changes here for Sheriff's Department. I'm guessing that various checks and all of these are good.
Hi, Ally.
Hey, Ally.
Hi, how's it going?
Great, how are you?
Good. Would you like to take your meet the people photo later, or whatever?
I think so.
Come on, shower.
And this is Brooks vehicle for Jevilin pick. If this is what I'm reading correctly. Okay, this has already been all approved and everything, so all we need to do is sign.
Okay.
So, we have paperwork here for Brooks. New vehicle for the Jevilin bank, he's trading in her metal, doing whatever.
Okay. Hi, Scott.
Hey, Scott. All right. We're early, you want to dip right in?
This is welcome. With those big help flowers.
Sorry to hear about that.
Uh, sure you guys saw the letter from Scott Wilson, about the appreciation for the, uh, what we did on A-4. Thank him for, because I did receive that.
Thank you.
We got some more solid numbers for our rock budget for projects we got going on.
Thank you.
I have a copy. So, Deer Run over here, we're looking, uh, just under fifty thousand for rock-only, non-flavoring, and depth. Or make that back rock and shoot. I've got sort of...
Here, just so you know, I took sixty thousand in November. Just so it's anywhere.
For that?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, yeah, that's a, I'm looking forward to it. Um, so, let's get Deer Run there first. W wrote up here, uh, two fifty quarter, two seventy is two miles. You've got half the rock there that we normally put. I would say it's for this year, let's just say that long, because it looks like it's in good shape. Uh, W wrote, uh, two seventy up to nine highway. We normally do three thousand tons per mile. I think if you look at one of them there, we dropped back to fifteen hundred tons a mile for this year. And that's a strategic split in our budget off the rock money. We have about thirteen thousand five hundred left over. I don't know if I have to lose two projects or, um, we still got the sales tax money that we have touched yet of three thousand four five hundred and eighty-sixty. Eleven point seven four percent, five point four percent.
And it's, it's been floating around out there in the other world.
Yes.
That, where the county's out of money, oh my gosh, we ain't got no rock budget, oh, 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 oh dear.
That's why I put this together.
And I, we're not out of money in the rock budget. It is, when you get down to a certain point, they have forever cut it out of the rock budget and start taking down the point four percent. We have these two projects to complete for sure. So, that is why we just said, okay, we're going to cut back on the rock and just stop unless we need it for blowouts or, you know, mud holes or whatever, which we have done out and continued up the rock, we needed it. So, for the general public out there, we are not out of money in the rock budget.
Right.
And we have other things that we need to get completed.
Yes, and Ally, just so everybody understands, that's our job to manage the money.
Yeah.
And so, we work with the Public Works Director to manage projects and have enough gravel for emergencies over the rest of the year. That's what we've done.
And one of the projects that we are running, Deer Run, you cannot run the semis down the, that road anymore. That's why the semis are sitting. And...
And Deer Run was on the list to be worked on before I even in the office.
Correct, it's been like a three-year deal.
I had nothing to do with it.
Yeah. That's, that's clear.
And again, that's our decision and Scott's to make. And if we see that we can make that happen and we can move things around, that's our decision.
Yep. So, anyway, I just wanted to get that out there, that we are not out of money in the rock budget. There is still money there. We will still continue to fix roads where they need to be fixed. So, all right, thank you. I'll get down on my soapbox.
Well, speaking of fixing roads, we fixed the mud hole up there fully proper. And he called out the gentleman, that Scott Wilson on A-4 was calling for a gap by hole down there.
And a little bit more about that, that hole. We've talked about this before. What happened down there was they came in and scarified it with the front scarifier and then pushed dust back in. The blade operators have to realize if they're going to do that, they've got to call for a little bit of gravel to fill that hole. And Luke said, that's exactly what happened. And then the next rain, it filled up with water, and there you go.
Uh, we did some work on, uh, three or two road. Uh, we got fixed, another call that they came in about, about the water in the road. So, that got fixed. Let's see, ditching, uh, Q road, uh, one eighteen to one ten. Did some work there. We did some ditching. Quarter mile with one fourteen in wash tubes. Let's see. The chip and seal, we're going to turn all the rock in. Uh, it's supposed to be this week, uh, first block, top of the map. We're talking about a certain chip and seal on the map. Dump trucks and the semis now.
And you can stop here, there too. There's another one that I want to make a point of. The county's not even started chippings, chipping sealed yet, correct?
Correct.
So, there is, there is no brand-new chicken seal out on K Road?
All patched, patched, yeah.
Yes, it's all patched.
Yes.
Once we get the chicken seal down on it, then we'll, we'll smooth road out.
That road is terrible.
Yes, it was.
And so, you got the chip and seal, it's supposed to start on the map.
Yep. Perfect, so, chip and seal is not good, done, do it. And just getting ready to start.
Yes.
Okay.
That's a piece of information.
Yes.
Love to thank you.
Uh, and again, you know, Deer Run over here, uh, give, can't think of the city enough for the water and the electric power company over there, helping us, you know, they're bopping trees out, we're taking trees out, so it's worked out really nice with them, so just appreciate that.
I think they're glad to get rid of the trees.
Yes.
Well, what we're doing, what we're doing there, I mean, they shouldn't have to do that for years, you know, so. I said, it's the normal on the trip, but it's worth it, and it is, it is. And again, it's a, for some semis on, yes, and, uh, we did, uh, GPS in the one radar, we talked about the knockout and the rest of them that we brought in individually, set them up, you know.
Okay, and then, at what point, you're going to have, you have something on your computer that monitors that and will have people, you know, also be there?
Yeah. It, it was on my computer at one time, but since that, that was in that trial run, it's not on my computer now, but I do have it on my phone.
Okay, so it's at a half?
Yes.
So, you'll need to take that with us and have it happen?
Yep. I'd like to have it on my computer again, let's do so much easier to see.
Sure.
And I got online list for this week, all genie and map, going to do far program map, test far and see if they made your connection, like we talked about this today. That's all I have.
I had, uh, a gentleman tell me one fiftieth from seventy-five to U, so that would be east of seventy-five. It's, cutting ditches pretty good moving the road. So, we probably need to take a look at that. And then on two forty-six, I had a gentleman call me and told me to call you guys too, both of you did. Mark Townleton coming out of the driveway, it's cutting into the road rather than going into the ditch. I don't know if we need to go over and shake that or what, but it's, it's...
Two forty-six where?
Two forty-six, and I was trying to see what his address is. So, I'll get it for you. Uh, it's, it's cutting into the road pretty good, and it's getting pretty deep. I don't want us to, number one, lose that road because we did a lot of work on it, but number two...
You contacted everybody very late?
Yeah, yeah, on the route very late. The very, very last house on the, uh, in that cluster of houses up there.
Okay.
Uh, just down from Jennifer, just east of Jennifer, the very last house east of there.
I know the very first house has that same issue right there.
Uh, coming on right about the highway.
Yep.
Yeah, well, this one's got the same thing, I might say, it is pretty, it's getting pretty bad right here at the, at the driveway, so, we're getting pretty deep, and I don't want anybody having a, right there.
And people need to realize too, when it gets into their portion out of our riding way, they need to be careful of those things.
Yeah.
Get it down.
The water running, yes.
Yeah, this, this is the, the road itself, so, yeah.
I love that.
Yeah. So, anyway, so I want to get that one. It'd be thirteen forty-four, six, two forty-six, correct?
Thirteen forty-four, six.
Yep. I'm actually right through the driveway, you can't miss it, so, that's all I did. All right, we're perfect.
I would say that, um, we did talk about over the summer during the dry time, there were a little bit of a wind, right?
Yes.
And I talked to a few people, they agreed on that, as long as, you know, this far we go back to, right, good luck. Yeah, so, please hear that, say what's wrong.
And in my, in my drive through to Henry, uh, I noticed that we are, and I believe it's the gentleman that we talked to, we already claim need more of the road then, so, um, it's looking good, keep it up, see how we can do.
Okay.
We'll have to see.
I'll have to see.
Just step on it, the baby can't come in.
Very good.
Inspecting.
Inspecting, he said, I kinda like having somebody else come in, but he understands if we opt out too, it's gonna take some time, and he has no problem with that.
From what the health department says, they, they don't...
Well, obviously it's not necessary. They're just willing to be, they're coming down, and it really hurts. It is that.
So, you're sick.
You love me?
Sure.
I think so.
That's right, I'm actually in the room for talk too, I thought that one. On your person, you think mom's worried, so you're worried. I know, I'm gonna shoot this, so... Because I don't think it's our age, just for test stuff, but you might check.
Yep. So everybody got a chance to read the minutes? Okay, entertain a motion to accept the minutes of June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five with corrections.
Say.
Been properly moved and seconded to accept the minutes of June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. Any further discussion with corrections? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, saying sign, motion carried. Um, got a note here from Brent from EMS. He called Friday to make sure we had everything we needed, and I just asked Christie to put him on the agenda for next Monday. Uh, I'd like to discuss the financial report that he sent, so... This survey is aware, if you've got any questions in that spot.
And Brett?
Yeah, well, I said Brent, Jay, they're financial people, whoever they want, right? So no one been done in executive session because of the confidential contract.
None of that.
Well, we'd have to do, and we're discussing their finances, we'd have to do it under executive session. And this would be for contract negotiations, which is what we would be in.
Yeah, we wouldn't be, it's not a privilege, and, uh, I'm not...
Because we couldn't discuss their public, their finances in public. They're not publicly trading, any.
I'm just...
Yeah, look it down.
I think, maybe a way, it's just, peace here, can't be, can't be planned. It's not personal. It's just not a general contract.
But I could, discussing their contract, I mean, it's...
Which will be, well, we, in a roundabout way, we are.
It's what I'm just saying, that the, there is an open record aspect to it, that if somebody asks for the stuff that they gave, it's...
Because appropriation, it can't...
Well, yeah, the, the appropriation itself, with the internal information could be protected or, but not, well, needed, so it's just a distinction.
Well, in order for us to be able to, in order for me to be able to, uh, negotiate, I said, I need to delve a little bit farther into the financial, uh, records that they sent us.
But, but what they sent us was simply them breaking out what they do with the appropriation.
No, that was not just the appropriation, that was the whole, that was the whole thing.
Yeah.
Well, at least as far as, that was the whole thing.
We don't know if that, what part of that is appropriation was, which is kind of the key question.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and, but, I mean, that's, the thing, mine here is, is if they expected that that discussion, I mean, they can, they can maybe claim that the document itself is a closed document, I just don't know if the discussion, because of two different laws about, you don't necessarily accept it, so, I don't know about our ability to discuss it, but, uh, closing session, so, I'll, I'll...
Yeah, get into that, because like I said, I don't believe that as far as them, uh, coming and answering questions that, that I need to know, that is just necessarily public knowledge. In order for us to successfully negotiate a contract with them...
Well, the, the question, county comes, then, understanding that in the case, there isn't, I mean, the county is in a private business, if you, you know, contract with the county with a certain amount of expectation, it would be transparent in doing so.
Sure.
And especially if, and, and that may mean that the public knows too. Um, so, I mean, I understand that there's a thin sort of thing that, you know, in actual creation of contract, there shouldn't, it shouldn't be something public necessarily, because it can't order you as a public official, right? You can't really freely, you know, make moves or something like that, for fear that it's political or anything, but in this instance, I'm just hesitant, so, I mean, I, I...
Yeah, you can look that up if you would, because like I said, I'm, I'm, there, there's information that I'm going to need from them in order to successfully negotiate, and I think on even terms with them.
And arguably, the provision of that information may be effective, it's directly, it can't be per documents, but if discussed openly, then that's, or in post session, that's, that's the distinction.
Okay.
They could probably send you details to be, as a record clause.
Okay, so, so that would be, I mean, if, if they don't want to discuss their financials openly, then if they send me what we're asking, that's fine, as, it's a confidential, okay? The, the, so we're kind of clear on that? I think we're both going after the same thing, we're just kind of coming at it from two different directions.
Well, and that just because of the fact that it's proposed to be a session, we've got to switch gears on that. I'll take more look at it during next week, is that right?
Yes, and I'll ask for coming on the subject. Okay.
Yeah, probably a little bit, a little bit out of my eye right now.
Well, I think, do you need that, that resolution?
Give it to you, kind of make sure that...
We have, we've reviewed the resolution agreement, the surveyor that makes the changes. It was terribly substantive, but, um, we don't say. It was basically the format you got, or you did a resolution.
What?
Do?
What changes that making?
Well, it's basically where it says survey of plats, it's plats where they use, uh...
If you have a red line, you're sitting on it.
So that would be in the second part, right?
to track it.
Okay.
We will pick them.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, yeah, that's, I'm bothered, but...
Did the fees go up? I'm sure. Or did they stay the same from what they were?
Yeah.
Okay. Hold up, resolution number?
Twenty twenty-five dash fourteen.
Dash fourteen?
Fifteen.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion, do we need two motions, one for the agreement, one for the resolution?
Yeah, let's do the resolution and then for the agreement.
Okay, so I would, uh, accept a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash fifteen, a resolution authorizing Jackson County, Kansas, designate a registered land surveyor to review and approve all subdivision plats or survey plats, establishing a cost for plat review and approval.
So what?
Is to properly move the second to accept, uh, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash fifteen, uh, any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye. All opposed, saying, all opposed, saying sign. Motion carried. There's your red one. Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the agreement between Jackson County and Tim Sloan, uh, surveyor, to become the designated official land surveyor for Jackson County.
Same.
Been properly moved and seconded to approve Tim Sloan as the official land surveyor for Jackson County. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye. All opposed, saying sign, motion carried.
What's the rate of that contract? Is it a yearly thing or per survey?
It's for survey.
Per survey.
And how is it for surveying?
Uh, forty dollars each, uh, and each subdivision plat for a fee of a hundred dollars for fifteen. Uh, forty dollars each, and each subdivision flat for a fee of a hundred dollars for fifteen lots or less, a hundred and fifteen dollars.
So how many were you at?
Sixteen to thirty lots, and ten dollars for thirty-one lots or more.
So the lowest is forty, and the highest is what?
Two hundred.
And that's for like a whole subdivision?
Yes, for thirty-one lots or more.
Can I get a copy of the resolution too?
Sure.
Please.
I'm sure we're going to be more than happy to provide that to you.
Here's the red line.
Go to copy the agreement after he signs it or he just. I can just give you a copy of the resolution, or whatever. Do we have a land surveyor before?
We did, with the guy, he's retired, but it was in recommendation.
What?
It's something where we wanted to happen.
Yeah.
Well, there you go, that just goes to show you that, you always read the statute because the client's always right. Subsection B does allow executive sessions to discuss data relating to financial matters, trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, individual relationships. Does this make it LLC, I think?
Oh, we'll be good with that.
Other than that, I don't think I've anything really hot. Been into just the usual set of work and, and go. Another open question, first thing we do.
And when, I was trying to think, we don't have as far as us having to go to any dates for day through, like, we don't have anything coming up, right?
No, you have your, your issue.
And when is it?
Yes, what?
Yeah, see, I don't have, I'm at that down here in July, so look, do you know what date that is?
Not yet, because I was just, I was supposed to be.
He's coming here? Okay. All right.
Yeah, that seems like, okay, but yeah, I would, I mean, that's all good to, in a way to do, so you're supposed to, you're supposed to. But I'm supposedly being gentle to the raw questions that we're saying.
Okay, perfect. All right, you have anything to talk? Hey, do you, do you have any?
Kate, Kate was, she had one deal, I saw the email on, somebody wanting to add some stipulums.
But people do that, they've done that before.
Yeah, well, yeah.
I know out there in that subdivision across the highway over there.
Subdivision is different than I think.
Well, she's, no, it's supposed to condemn you, but it grew, now let's get her down there, where do you get that?
What am I telling her about?
It's like, have evidence, have this. I'm just saying, excuse me, sorry.
Well, we're waiting on Pete to come down. I'm, I'm a little concerned with the drastic mill levy drop. And the reason I'm concerned about it is, is because in speaking with both of our, two of our neighboring counties, Brown, Napson, they are in dire straits because they have tried to hit their revenue neutral for the last several years, and they have, and they have no, no cash reserves carrying them through at all, and they made it happen, they're done. And I have said since I became a member of this board, that I was elected to this board, I don't like huge drops, because those usually turn around and end up with huge peaks. I am, I am more of a, let's keep it level, let's try and, try and do it that way, but if you start dropping like, like we're talking about dropping this year, I think in a couple of years you're going to be in trouble. I don't really do.
And in trouble in what way?
In trouble as far as we have no cash reserves to carry us through in case something happens. And, you know, they recommend we have six months cash reserves. That's been a recommendation for, forever.
We're generating the same amount of revenue that we did the prior year.
And I, I understand that, I understand that. But we have, or cash reserves have been slowly dwindling, 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 because number one, rocks going up, fuel's going up, everything's going up. And I, you know, and we're going to get the same argument that we always do, and I understand that, but I, what I'm saying is, the drastic drop is going to end up, we're going to have to drastically raise one of these days. I, I like to keep things on the easy peasy. I just asked Chris to, to look at what we would do, and this was for the same revenue neutral as last year, right? Which is just a little bit higher than what we are now.
This would have been from what you were at last year, what you did, I didn't do.
Okay, what we were at last year, what we did, and we're talking on a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar house, thirty-one sixty-six.
I'm not following, you said you have to, Chris, do you want?
You have to figure tax dollars, the difference between the RNF this year and what we were at last year. Like if you're at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar home, and they don't have a percent, and it would be approximately thirty-two dollars on that.
So I guess what I'm saying is, if we want to drop the mill levy, I'm all for that. But dropping the mill levy as drastically as we are talking, I don't think that, that is good for the county, I really don't.
I still think you have to go back and look at money generated, not the bill levy.
And I agree, I, I, I've said that all along.
But you're saying the drastic cut.
The drastic cut in the mill levy, I like, I've said this for two years, I like gradual, not chalking. If we chomped.
Last year, how much did we increase from twenty-three to twenty-four? Half a fill, correct? We generated how much money? Okay. And, and from what I heard from the public, they don't want that. And, and so, if, if in order to conserve reserves, then that means we've got to cut departments, and that means we'll, we'll have to, in order to gain reserves.
And I, I fully understand what you're saying, and I will go back to something you said earlier in the meeting, about, that's our job to do, it's our job to protect the county and protect the county themselves, just because somebody comes after me and picks forth support, just let them. I mean, I, I can't, I can't in good conscience look at this drastic of a cut.
So tell me how, based on, and Kate's here, so, we can talk about this later, but tell me how, based on what we've worked out last week in the, in the budget, that we won't generate enough money to build reserves?
To build reserves? I don't believe we will. I don't believe we will, I think it will be status quo, and there will be no reserves built for next year.
Because I thought we built some of that in, and we're building reserves. But I'd like to go.
I mean, I just want, for Kate, I don't want to throw that out there, so anyway, uh, hi Kate, Mary.
I think the idea was, I had sent you that email, was that, it's funny, the question.
The revenants.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear, I didn't have to keep track of those, because that would be a nightmare.
The, the general idea is, owner of large tract of land, say they're a subject, as the owner of the land, they are allowed by law, the conditions upon use when they settle. And it's, you know, there's obviously statutes that say how you can do that, kind of go through a lot of stuff to do that, but they're considered to be private covenants, they're not, although they may act like a kind of restriction, meaning they may say, you can't invest, mortgages up, you know.
So buyer beware, when you purchase a piece of property, if it has that on there, you got to be willing to agree.
Yeah, or if you don't agree to it, you, by buying it, you are subject, right? Because you're buying, you, you go out there to that subdivision and it's, you know, whatever, and you go there and you can't have a blood ground pool.
But it's not a subdivision.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so is this, is this in preparation for a subdivision? Is that what they're putting these covenants on for, or is that just, no?
That's the most usual way to do it, that's, that's one example. But I think in general, the concept is, is that, that, you know, any landowner, you know, I own the whole section of land, and it's all farm. I can sell my, you know, sell this quarter and say, you know, you can't have this kind of, whatever, you know, you can't have oil and gas. Buying, you know, when you buy it, you, right there.
It happens all the time, however, it happens fairly frequently, the people say, you know, you can't put mamba home.
Yeah.
Or you can't put whatever.
Now, if you guys come and say, they're not allowing this practice, that's a zoning question, then, then Kate's got to, you know, get out the hammer and tongue, and work, but these private, you know, individual covenants are not something that you're required to report. And they may, knowing that their place may affect, maybe the appraisal job you have to do, I don't know, but, I don't know about that. But I'm just saying, that, nothing in that would require anything other than, if a private landowner has a problem with that covenant, they're going to be disreported, or agreed, not to you.
So they were putting restrictions on the type of houses, square footage and all that. So if I go to issue a building permit, I don't have to sort through restrictions on properties before I issue a building permit? That was my concern.
If it was like, their, you know, their requirement for square footage is, is above, you know, yours, doesn't matter. You know, and they, somebody issues a permit, they violate the covenants of the zone authority, you're signed. And they, you know, whoever can call you up and just say, okay, so zoning, we're prohibited by zoning, if you've got a problem with a renegade, you know, homeowner, that's your problem, of course you, of course you pay the salary you want.
So it's nothing, the, Kate needs to be concerned about, we need to be concerned about, it's all in there, okay?
Uh, you all, so I wanted me to check on these surrounding counties and what they do for penalties and all that, and they find buildings, so, I've got a list, you want to look at it, you want me to just tell you?
Yeah, just give us highlights and say it.
So, the questions were going to be asked, do you have, zoning requires a permit, is it a separate office or an office? What kind of penalty is there for not getting a permit? Do you add a discovered building with a current or current plus two? And do you use Eagleview or similar technology or change finder? So Axon, Brown, Dominant is not, Douglas did, Jefferson, Neha Hall, and Pop County, Shawnee and all that, those are the ones. So Axon, Brown, Neha Hall, they do not, I'm saying. For the discovered properties, they just do current, and they just use their GIS staff. Brown, they just use current. Douglas, yes, they have zoning, and yes, of course, it's a separate office, waiting to hear back on the penalties for not getting a permit, permit in Neha Hall, so we haven't got that yet. So they put it on the current, and think there might be an issue, because when you go back on the two, you have to go to voter for tax maintenance on that, and I could pull that up, please, I'd say. Jefferson County, they have zoning, they do a normal fee for the penalty, but at two times for repeat offenders. They just do current, so they don't do current plus two, and they have a GIS department that just keeps legalized reinspection to find these things. Neha County just does current, but County, they just charge the normal fee, which no penalty. They just do current, and they have GIS staff to do change finder. Shawnee County, they do two times, the permit fee for the penalty, and they do current plus two at the house or significant structure.
So you think it would be a lawn, a shop, garage?
I would assume that would not hold any significance of your system. So that, um, houses or commercial structures or whatever.
So they don't, if somebody built an ag building, didn't have a permit for it, they don't do anything?
They would just do current, they would do two times the.
Two times the penalty, and add it to the.
Okay, current, well, it's current, yeah, it's current.
So nobody, from what I'm hearing, nobody goes back, because it'd be kind of a pain in the rear to go back and go through voter and everything and get it, so, okay.
The needs pushpin, which we're looking into, and it sounds pretty good.
Explain that.
So it's a change finder technology, we just started looking into it on Friday, so we didn't get a chance to.
Sure.
It is significantly cheaper, so I don't know what that means yet. So while BNC, they have their own zoning, they do two times the permit fee, they just do current, and they don't have any sort of change finder at all.
All right, so like I said, it kind of sounds like everybody just stays current, no going back two years or anything. Do, and I guess from what I'm hearing here from here on the county report, was that most of the other counties will do either the normal fee or double the fee. But since we don't have a fee for, correct or wrong, we don't have a fee for ag, that's correct?
Except that you put that on the instructions now, that it would be two times what the normal fee.
Okay, that's, and that's why we want to make sure that we're focused on doing that, it's all good?
So it will just be, you all need to decide from what date you want us to start with those that we find. Because as of January first, we're going back to, we're going back three years on changes, potential changes on that. So anything that we find in this change finder, do you want us to, I mean?
Find a change finder, finder, you don't use the term change finder, is that software that you use?
It's part of Eagleview.
It's part of Eagleview, okay, so that's what recognizes, last two years ago, there wasn't anything. Last, two years ago, there wasn't anything here, and now today, there is something there.
Right, so their, their flyover that they did, did in, what, 21? December of 21, they did December of 24. So from that flyover to this new flyover, it's any changes that they found. And it could be on an existing structure, it could be a new structure. And we talked about there are false positives and.
If you've already eliminated the majority of those.
Yeah.
Okay, I would think you would go back four or three years. I mean, first of all.
Now, is there, is there a disadvantage to going back four or three years? Because otherwise, if you're, if you don't do it this time, then three years, now you can catch it again.
I mean, that's, yes.
So that's, that would be my recommendation.
But other counties, that's what they do when they see the, if they're only finding the, the changes every two years, one year, three years.
Sometimes six years.
Six years, they go back, put them all on, and move forward. That would be my recommendation.
But if on January 26th, right? They will, they will go on for January 26th, but in our system, why?
Yeah, I think, I think that would be the way to do it, so you, otherwise, if you go back, board, board tax bills and everything, I think that's going to be a pain, I don't think it's going to be worth our time doing that.
So.
The way would be if it's a big building.
Yeah.
We would definitely put them on for January 26th, but you're talking about penalties and sending something out to these people that didn't get building permits and issuing those penalties and all that.
Yes.
So, it'll be a lot.
It's separate, that's separate from taxation. That's a building.
Right.
I mean, send them the letter saying you didn't get a building permit for this building that we found that had been built in this time period for three years. So, uh, the penalty phase is, you know, double the, or double the fee, and this, this is what your fine's going to be. I mean, I'm probably fine with that.
Do you want me to bring them to you, so you know how many are going out? I'll give you an idea of what's, how many are going out.
I mean, I mean, I.
Why, why don't you wait and start that going forward and somehow put it out there that there will be penalties if you don't get building permits?
But then, what we're talking about are people that have already circumvented the system.
I know, but no, I don't think everybody understands or knows what they're supposed to be doing.
Every time you drive into Jackson County, you see Jackson County's in zone. Building permit for Florida leaves what the sign says.
So you're saying the penalty phase is that it's like.
Wait and start the first of January. Put some, I think we need to put something in the tax statement, maybe even that states this and has the, you know, the.
So you, you want to give a grace period?
I mean, these, these here that have been like three years back or four years back, leave it alone and start the first of January with anybody that doesn't get, you know, and in your next, your next flyover or whatever, and you find so many, those people then should get penalties because we put it out there and held it, we tried to make it.
But we've already charged, and we've charged, we've already charged penalties for some of this information. There was somebody with a pool, and somebody with a this and that, we've already sent letters to them. So I, I think because we've already done that, you gotta do it with everybody across the board.
I think the other, I think there's still one distinction of the taxation issue versus what the compliance issue is. Agree, I think it's fine to say, we're not going to go back and redo all the taxes, it's too, too much trouble. There probably should be some kind of, and I don't know if it's, you know, there's obviously small fish, but we have like the end of it. We got a problem because they built, built a big building, no permit, and at a point which you can cross the line. And you start to saying, you know, we're washing your hands of everything, get it developed. So, what I'm saying is.
We are giving them a grace period. We're not going back after, if they build it in 23, we're not going back after 23 or 24 to taxes. Starting in January, that's when they'll pay taxes on that new building. But there's gotta be a penalty phase of people, more and more people are just gonna go, hey, all you have to do is just plain bill records.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's my point.
And it'll take them three years, you get your building tax free for three years, you get no penalty, what's the harm in it?
And the bill, and it's just, it's a permitting issue rather than.
It's a permitting issue.
You get that permit, there's a, what is the penalty for it? Say that they submit a, it's a supplemental building, shed, submitted building permit, everything's good, what's their ultimate? No, how much money do you get?
Depends. A few hundred dollars in probably most cases.
Yeah, that's what I mean, it's just, that's the kind of thing, and at the very least, you have that, even though it's not like a big money situation, you at least set the bar that says.
Correct.
We don't, when a guy builds a big thing, you know.
We can't just say, oh, we're only going to go after you.
Yeah.
So it shouldn't be that difficult. I guess, you, you know the names of mad, madresses of all these buildings that were built without permits already, correct?
They haven't gotten through at all.
But you know your change finder has identified that.
Yes.
When it identifies it, it identifies it with a property, correct? Okay, what you're saying you haven't gotten through is to make sure they're not.
Already picked up, you think we got through all of those, but we're gonna double check as we're inspecting each one of them.
Timeline to get through the remainder.
I don't really know. I don't, I don't know if it's by the end of the year if we can get it, we, we need to filter it in. We have the, the six of the county that we're doing this year, we've already filtered those in. But we have five, six of the counties that, yes, we, as we find them and are expecting them, that we can filter them into the permit phase of what we do each year.
So.
But that's potentially hundreds more.
If you want to put something into the tax statement, put it or advertise it, put something in and say, look, if you build a building in, from what day, uh, 23?
22.
22 on, and you did not get a building permit, if you voluntarily come in and fill out that building permit, and it's an aggravated building, you'll be charged, any building, you'll be charged the normal fee. If by the end of the year, we have not heard from these people, it will be double the fee. Maybe you'll get 10%.
These old people coming and doing.
So let me ask you, you guys just implemented this on the ag buildings that you're gonna, we're gonna charge double of a normal fee?
Correct.
Before it was.
There was no fee, there's gotta be a penalty.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
I mean, that's giving people the opportunity to come in, say that you work, and then you just start checking people off the list. And let's put it on our Facebook page, let's put it on the county website, let's put it on, uh, behind a plane and fly it over full county. I don't, you know, however that is, Ally will have it in the paper, she'll probably make bold letters. But that gives people, you know, if they're, if they're paying attention.
That's true, that's, I mean, I agree with that.
You should, you should say, I didn't know, I didn't.
And that's all.
They're, they'll be overwhelmed.
Yeah.
Trying to do it all.
Let's see some stuff here, you know.
Right?
Yeah, Mark, I agree, there's, there's gonna be people who always claim agers, um, and, and they're right to.
Yeah.
I mean, that's just, you know, or I forgot, and, and, or I didn't know, and, okay.
Yeah.
People claim, I didn't know that speed limit was 485, I didn't know that.
Or say, I just feel like.
It's, it's an opportunity.
They would be overwhelmed if we don't do it that way.
And this is an opportunity for people to make a break.
They're gonna be overwhelmed with a 300 or something, that's a tax.
But we've also talked about Mary coming up and helping with that process. And so that will, that will help you move through that process. And the sooner we can get her up there, the better.
Yeah, I've seen it.
You've seen it, okay.
Yeah.
Um, normally, this would probably require a, like a special event, permit.
Yeah, I would say so, okay. Uh, this is from. Is this in the vet center?
So it appears.
Has it been zoned for the vet, the vet center? Do we know the owner of this activity? And who is that? Now, I'd just reach out to Rowdy and go, hey dude. That, that would be my recommendation. I mean, it's one thing if he's having a private event, but is it different when you advertise and, yeah, and call in an event center, a community, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean. Here, we were talking about people from circumvent.
Also had, um, another gentleman come in this morning, um, he is zoning B1. It has all sorts of retail options, and he's wanting to do like a monthly, what does she call it, junk test? So vendors coming in once a month to do that. In A1, A2, you see a special event in the Brigs a lot and needing approval by you all. But zoning B1, with retail opportunities, I don't, there isn't anything about special event on business zones purposes. But it probably will bring in more traffic, so I gave them a special event application just in case.
But if it's a reoccurring, it's.
It's gonna be a seasonal, reoccurring monthly thing.
Then it's not a special event.
Well, you can have a permanent special event application out there.
Yeah, what we did for the place out there, okay.
Yeah. So, do you want me to have to pull that out and just have him covered for that?
How is this?
Okay, because it's B1, it's like, I don't really know, I don't have an answer for that.
Or, you don't, or it doesn't define it.
And when you're talking about more traffic and everything, uh.
Did that parking?
Safety pass or parking.
Like one point something, so they've got enough space. I mean, I can have him just go ahead and submit a special event, that way he is covered, that way you all know.
I think what we should do is to submit the special event, uh, application.
It's similar to like the, the branch rodeo or thing that was going on over by Dennis. And that will activate, that will, you'll notify the neighbors so that they know and they can have an opportunity on a special event like that, if you did that, the neighbors came in and spoke about the work out there.
About traffic and parking, things like that.
Yeah, lighting, how's the climate gonna shut down, is it gonna be going till 2:00 in the morning, or is it set, you know, certain time of night?
I'll have to check on that, requirements for notifying neighbors of.
I know there was a couple that came in and spoke about that.
Maybe Ally can sort of know the agenda maybe?
I thought they.
I thought, I thought you notified them.
I'll have to look into that.
Yeah. Yeah, I thought you notified them because I remember they did it once about it. And the thing, and the neighbors kind of complained because of the parking, and they parked on the highway and so on and so forth. So they filled it out, and I thought you notified the neighbor directly across the room.
I'll look into that. So I'll have him do a special event application.
And then I would, I would send Rowdy a.
I would just call.
Or call him or send him an email and say, I'm hanging up, by the way. You need to fill out.
So, yeah, um, that remark in there about community building is, is zoning.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
That's cell number four.
Do you stop in this?
How much is a facility to make if you self-report it this year? You know what I mean, like, is it depending, or do you listen on your website or?
Yeah, it's reading instructions.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, uh, it depends on the, the cost of the project.
Okay. There's a schedule. If I cannot find it all. Anything else for me?
I can't think of any. You're only a phone call away. Can you find it, Ally?
Yeah, I can find it right here.
It was said, I've got it right here, I'll have, if you need it.
Is it, is it under $20, $11, $21?
Yep.
The $2,000, $15 bucks, okay.
That's it.
Okay, I will screenshot that and save that to my phone. All the, all the random, my phone gets filled with all sorts of news and personal things.
So there is no APF right now, is that correct for building permits? Okay.
But there will be a penalty if they do not fill out the building permit.
There will be, so, okay. So if we've already, if it was an ag building, you still need to go. So if we've already, if it was an I building, you still need to go in and let them know, but there's no fee?
There's no, there's no building fee for it.
Okay.
Yep.
So you just... Yeah. I need us to book the project. It's actually easier for you guys, so you can see, because we can just keep hearing it on the ground.
That's good to me.
He's still got plenty of that as well as... He can sign up to take care of parking.
That's pretty cool.
He said he sold for championships, rotates chip and seal every two and three years.
Which is a lot to open a... Where do we get to that?
There you go.
I emailed Francis here, he'll help the 4% size size of that number.
Okay.
Yeah, and that needs to be out for a bit, we just wanna try to renew it, it's not something new. Right. Right. I'll have to put a couple more aside.
Right. Say another the other times. They'll be using it. So...
And hopefully they understand.
Uh, press. Motion for stay denied on Mr. Willis' application. We've got a court of appeals on that. What he was up for is motion to stay, really proceedings are this. By the commission on that. So not going to settle.
Alright.
Imagine maybe Mr. People could... More fulsome before it's done.
Sounds good, thank you. What's that?
Denial, right?
Denial.
Denial.
Anything else come up or is it good?
Nope, I like the review to go, buddy, thank you.
You tell by how well the heat is here.
Okay, did you please send me something to send on?
Yeah, I'll send him.
Did your trial go good last week or your four year?
I think it went well, it was called a trial for a reason. It was a trial. It was pretty much three full days.
Oh my God.
Sun and sun, as they say. You can read about it in Johnson County Post, it'll be interesting. I don't recommend trials to anybody. Most of my clients, I don't recommend.
Walk up, step out.
Yeah, sure. You can hurry up. Here are our documents.
Oh, I also have that in this, uh, paper. I'm sending out from there.
Okay. How do you do? Great, how are you?
Good.
Thank you.
Hello. I also, um, called. And left a message.
Earl Hopper, stop it, man! Why do you always talk?
Do you want me to start?
Talk some more hours. I think we have a couple questions.
Sure.
What you got, come on up.
Sure.
By the way, we'd very like to hear you hear us.
Sure.
Yeah, well, and then do you get? Well, actually, I don't think we have to because it was a subject brought up by Kate earlier.
I wasn't on the list, but either this is a law partner.
I think I take the list with you, so.
You. Okay. On the fifth, you're gonna have a event at your place.
Okay.
Uh, at the community building? Is there, you want to explain what you're involved in with us? Is there any thing that's zoned for a special event or anything going down here?
So. We try to say this in a way that, um, is not at this area. I built the building. I have seven companies. I warehouse a lot of stuff. Four times a year, we clear it out and we have parties. I love my freedom. I love the Fourth of July. That's why we're doing it on the fifth. We do it in spring. We do it in the fall. We do it in the winter. I'm gonna continue to do it and then I'm gonna pack my stuff back in it. I don't need the commissioner's permission at people's house. I don't charge anything. There's no revenue that comes out of it. It's a bunch of us hanging out, having a good time, which thousands of people in Jackson County do through the years. So, I don't really understand what the people do with this.
Well, the way you had it worded, you're asked community building. That is a, that is a zoning issue there. If it's not a community building, that's fine.
Well, it is four times a year. When me and all my friends get together, I don't know if I call it a warehouse or not. If you guys feel about it, some of you.
I understand. I understand what work I'm doing, right?
Well, I mean, kind of. I could have built a building and filed it under an ag permit and tried to state underneath it. I didn't. I went over and said, hey, it's gonna be a warehouse. It's gonna be modern. I pay my taxes. I've had you guys out on my property to look at the building. So.
Yeah. We do appreciate it, but like I said, that's just raised red flags is all that that is.
Yes.
So, that's why we're asking questions.
You guys should come out and hang out one of these times. You have a good time. And I got Ted Nugent coming in November. That'll be fun.
Definitely. There you go. So, like I said, it's just raised red flags. So, that's, that's a perfectly fine explanation. It's there. And I, so it is, you do have listed as a warehouse on.
Yes, that's why I got a permit ask that gets primary use.
Sure. Okay. Alright. Do we have further questions? Kate?
No.
Okay.
You good?
That's, that's all we want. Thanks.
I think people are going back to list the reason.
You guys spray mine?
I appreciate you spraying it.
I'm not spraying it. I'm low. I have feet. I can't spray it. So, I'm trying to mow it. Well, I try to get the animals seen first. You don't have to get it a little bit tall.
Good luck with that.
They don't want it anywhere.
Yeah. Alright, thanks, Charlie. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, so no feet needs no special test.
Correct. Yep.
Noted.
Perfect. There you go. Yeah, to answer your question, I don't believe the meeting being amended to the agenda because it was initiated by. Yes.
You see ya.
Alright. Hi, Kate. Thank you.
Do you guys want to share yourself a little bit?
Sure.
Um, we can do it whenever we want to. We're only free of you.
I'll try to do it, guys.
You can do it in front of this. You can do it in the hallway. You can sit right here.
We sit right here. I like to be hidden.
Sure.
Okay.
Make it the call.
Thank you.
Sure.
Can't see my.
I have to move my card. Sorry. One second. Sometimes I would say if it was off of it earlier, sometimes like.
I mean, you're supposed to put your roll in your.
Sometimes I just don't look at my cards. So, sometimes it blocks itself. Let me share. We're good. Yeah, okay. We're good now. Alright, let's have a guy deliver this. Look at the kids flag in the background.
Alright.
A little bit. Yeah, that's good. Here we go. One, two, three. And one, two, three. Perfect. Alright, thank you.
You betcha.
We'll have the proof of that probably another week, week and a half. I think I just have to share and then.
It'll work.
Plan is that it'll not just be tomorrow, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Ally.
Uh-huh. You guys have a good rest of your day. Good Fourth of July.
You too.
Yes. Enjoy it. All things are off, so. See you later.
I don't think especially is it after today.
I don't know. Yeah. Who knows?
Yeah, this is true.
Get these little showers in time.
There you go.
So, see you down.
It's tricky. I'm trying to pick up the camera. It was like, all of a sudden, here comes an outdoor.
Yeah, that was just kind of.
It was. I thought it was the second evening.
Are you looking?
I think we got a little compared out the same. Still think it could have been the, uh, in the shop. Dryer. Change on, change on. Didn't do that in house like you mentioned. How would it do? Okay, the question was cash carryover. How much cash carryover based on what you're doing? Do we have? What's it? Obviously, it depends on how much money is.
For county general, what proposal one point four, that's a negative point eight.
So.
One point four one three nine. And Jeremy Brooks two, eighteen ninety two.
But we call it's the one point five million was taken. Is that what affected the two point? Whatever.
Well, this is community general. The community general is not a more professional.
Right.
Do you want to say where the village?
No, um, not necessarily. You're saying this containing general in twenty five, what did we, what was actual?
We don't have an actual for twenty five. The actual for twenty four is two point seven.
And what, and?
We're estimating two point eight.
For twenty five? Why would that be different? Or twenty six?
Which is gonna be dependent on. Okay, for twenty five, we just have estimates still. So, there's a possibility we might not be on the work plan that we're estimating.
Possibility.
Or we couldn't have worked, but the person won't be estimated. So, that can.
Exactly. And so. Why are we estimating so low for twenty six? If we had two point, I mean, if it's always been over two billion.
Well, it's gonna be, okay, total resources available for twenty five estimates, ten million. Um, and your. Total expenditures estimated is ninety point three seven. And like I said, I want to be able to go through this again for today. So, I'm also concerned that I'll be able to get a little more out there.
Yeah.
To see everything.
Yeah. I'd like to say, I just wanted to throw that out there. I'm just, I'm just worried. It's my, it's my biggest thing. I'm worried. So, let's, uh, let's let Christie look at that and.
I, I'm trying to understand the problem. I mean, don't you get lots? Are you worried about it?
I'm not in. I don't know. I'm sat on the other side of the table on that that. You had lots of years where it's like everybody has to sit tight with their bank. They just have to know that. You know? I don't know. I feel like we need to try to listen to the taxpayers.
Sure.
This year.
And, and I, well.
I mean, I know what you're saying. I know where you're going.
Listen to them this year.
I know. No, I know where you're coming from.
I like to listen to them all the time. But I, like I said, I, I've always been an advocate when it's said on the school board, I was an advocate. And when I came up here, I said I was an advocate of little increases and decreases to keep things steady, not dropping them all away. That's, that's what worries me. That's what worries me.
So, had we decided to not be revenue neutral? And we were just going to generate half a million dollars over our mill levy right now? Or going into twenty six?
Generate half a million dollars?
More new money. So, in other words, don't be revenue neutral. We were seventy four or something last year.
I said, that's.
What I'm trying to get at is.
What you do you do there?
You still gotta drop the bill levy. The mill levy to me is not an indicator.
No, I, and I've said that a long.
But you keep saying you're an advocate for gradually, uh, or staying.
But when I say, when I, because this is what people look at as a mill levy. When I say I'm, I'm an advocate of little increases and decreases, I'm not necessarily talking about the mill levy. I'm talking about the whole, uh, revenue stream.
Okay.
Okay.
As low as there.
And we're clear on that. I'm, I'm.
Cause you kept saying the mill levy.
Because that's what generates our revenue stream. Okay, I'm, I'm, like I say, if we want to try this. I'll say, let's try it. I just worry about the fact that. And maybe I, maybe I worry too much. If something happens major. Then, you know, uh. We're. We're gonna be not sitting here.
I don't believe that. I don't, I guess.
Well, that's my.
I mean, based on the, based on the cash carryover, I mean. And we'll find out here shortly, I think. You know?
Correct. Like I say, let's, let's give it a bit more.
If we're not getting any revenue. And we have to solely or dedicated to using reserves, there's major trouble in this.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
I don't see that happening.
And I, I'm just, I'm just, I.
I mean, if you're talking civil war or something like that, I don't.
No, no. I'm just talking about that, you know, if we have a major malfunction, whatever, whatever it is. And we have to go back to, to cash carry, carryover for our reserves for three months, four months, are we going to be able to do that?
Again, I, I don't, I don't believe that's gonna be the case. I don't believe that that, you're saying that if we have to do that, that's saying that everybody has just decided they're not gonna pay the property tax.
Yeah, well, guess what? That's kind of the mood that's out there anyway. You know?
Okay, so we raise three mils. Three mils will give you four hundred eighty seven thou.
Okay, and, and what does that put?
Or seventy, so that would make you go to seventy three.
And what were we last year?
Seventy.
Seventy two.
Seventy two something, yeah.
Okay. So, just look at it. I mean, as long as we're looking at generated revenue. We're at, at revenue neutral, we're generating more revenue, we've taken three hundred thousand or. I'm sorry. At revenue neutral, we're generating the same amount of dollars coming in than we did the prior year. We have cut three hundred thousand dollars out of the rock budget, moved that into the rather the machinery. So that we, and, and I believe, I thought we had a plan that we would not purchase any new equipment in twenty six. And then in twenty seven, we would have enough to purchase one new grader and still have cash left over in that.
Like I say, I just wanted to throw that out. I'm just, I just. I'm just worried about it.
Quit worrying.
Yeah, quit worrying. Uh, I, let's say, I'm not, I'm not upset. I'm not anything. I just want to throw that out there that, that. I don't like big jumps and big dips. Never have, never will. So, if it comes down to it.
It's not, it's not a big deal. So, we.
We're in general saying, yeah, I understand it.
We only, we only generated. Last year was a three hundred thousand dollar. So, if in twenty six, working on the twenty seven budget. We go, okay, we've gotta give our employees raise. We've gotta raise the bill levy. Okay, we've gotta generate more money. We don't have, it doesn't have to be huge. To generate more money.
Sure.
So.
So, like I said, I'm, I'm just, I just want to make sure that everybody's clear that I'm, I. I will work with this, but I don't necessarily think that it's in the best interest of the county to do it. I really don't.
I, I don't know what counties you were talking about, but this county. For two reasons, we are cash only. Not all counties are, and we have good reserves. I don't want the public, just like this whole, uh, rock thing. I got a text this morning from a guy. Why are you out of money? I said, I guess I would check your source or where you're getting your information. If it's Facebook or something, wanna be, you know, whatever. You're, you're not getting your, your information.
Right.
And all misinformation does. Is cause panic in the community.
Yep.
Now, maybe that's what people are trying to do, is cause panic in the public. But I think it's, I just think it's cruel to people to give them misinformation. Uh, about a rock budget that we're managing.
Yeah.
Money, money. And so. I, yeah, I'm comfortable with seeing revenue neutral. I talked to a gentleman the other day who is father, business owner, and I told him what we were doing. He was pleased that we were gonna be doing that. Um, but I said, just be prepared. That you won't see as much, much rock being put on roads. There won't be these large projects that completely rebuilt. He goes, I'm okay with that. I said, okay. I just want to.
Sure.
You know, I'm just testing the waters with you because he, he talks to a lot of people and, uh, like I said. I, I think we're really fine.
That's, and that, that's fine, David. Like I say, I just want to throw my concerns out there.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I just think everybody has to manage. We need to drive.
Yeah.
Sure. But like I said, I, I'm just putting my concerns out there.
I appreciate that.
Cause like I said, the Popovich counties, they're, they've done the same thing for several years and their cash reserves have been eaten away. So, that's, I, that's what I wanted to try and.
But their cash reserves are being eaten away? They're not doing something right in their budget.
And that's.
That's what it says to me. Our cash reserves aren't being eaten away because we're staying within our budget.
Right.
The only, the only person that, I mean, to my knowledge, that goes over. The only, the only person that, I mean, to my knowledge, that goes over budget can, at, at times, has been law enforcement, and that's happened. I, sometimes those things happen.
Yeah. Let's say, I'm, I'm not trying to be argumentative or anything, I just want to throw my concerns out here, and it's about, you know, when I, when I heard this about the two counties, and what they've been doing for the past several years. I just want to make, make my concerns known.
Okay.
All right. Let's see, do we have anything else to come for us today?
I don't have anything, Mark.
Linda? Christie? All right, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm doing it.
Same.
Yes, we brought the meeting seconded, we adjourned this meeting, any further discussion? Hearing noted, all the papers say aye. All both say aye, so I vote it carries. I'm sure there will not be misinformation coming out of this meeting, I want to raise backs, you know, I want to do this, you know? You know a goal, I do a goal.
I do, I, I...
Such is life. I'll wait to see it on Facebook, it's happening.
Well, let me give you some help. Don't believe it.
Yeah.
Whatever you read about yourself, don't believe it.
Don't believe it.
I think I am gonna run out and look at that project out of here, uh...
Close it.
Sure.
Only if he lets us deal with it, probably.
You remember I told you last week, I did, I tell you last week, I was alone, and broke the, uh, I went turn to the left and the tractor went to the right? Tire I broke. So you know, sort of parts and pieces, get them, go down and get the parts and pieces ordered, has that ordered been? Did you do your primer on setups on that tractor?
I believe it.
You know I got the wrong one?
I believe it.
So now I gotta do that.